To call to order the Centerville City Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, December 16th, 2024. Ms. Sauber, call the roll, please.
Mr. Adolph.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Here.
Dr. Rohr.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the addition of Superintendent's Recommendation Number Three and the removal of Executive Session?
Remove.
Second.
Ms. Sauber, call the roll, please.
Mr. Adolph.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes. We had nobody sign up for public participation this evening, so we will move right into Board and Administrative Reports, starting with the Legislative Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Durnbaugh.
The Senate Finance Committee held its first hearing on Senate Bill 313. This bill would enact Alyssa's Law and require public and private schools to implement a wearable panic alert system. This bill would make a $25 million appropriation to support the purchase of such alarm systems. The bill is labeled Alyssa's Law, named after 14-year-old Alyssa Alhadeff, who was killed in the 2018 shooting in Parkland, Florida. Alhadeff's mother Lori established the nonprofit Make Our Schools Safe, which is now lobbying for panic alarms in schools nationwide. Seven states have adopted such measures since 2019, and legislation is now pending in 10 other states. The House Bill passed Senate Bill 208 with a vote of 90 to 0. This bill would require school districts to include an exception for children of active military personnel and their open enrollment policies. This is a bill that we have been following, but has new elements added. For example, the bill now includes, requires the Board of Education of a school district and governing board of an education service center to seek to meet the varying and unique needs of students and teachers when purchasing technological office equipment and computer hardware and software, and requires the board to consider long-term cost of ownership. Another item added was establish the parental, I'm sorry, prenatal to five early childhood post-secondary regional partnership program to support early childhood to post-secondary regional partnership throughout Ohio. It also defines a home education learning pod as a voluntary association of parents who direct their children's education through home education that meets specified requirements and exempts home education learning pods for childcare regulations. I'm just going to remind you all, this is a bill for military students to come into our school district, and now there's homeschooling in this bill. So I just wanted to make sure you guys caught that. Permits a pre-service teacher permit to be one-year duration in addition to three years under continuing law. So we have something about teachers in here as well. The Senate Education Committee held its fifth hearing on Senate, or I'm sorry, House Bill 8. This bill would enact the Parents' Bill of Rights to require public schools to adopt a policy on parental notifications on student health and well-being and instructional materials with sexually explicit content. The committee heard proponent and opponent testimony on the bill. The committee passed a substitute version of the bill that, okay, ready? Requires district to adopt policies allowing for release time religious instruction and defies core curriculum as reading and English language arts, mathematics, science, social studies, health, education. This is not House Bill 445, which we have been following, but they are adding components of that bill into this one. I have reached out to both Representative Young and Senator Antoni, asking them to vote no on both Senate Bill 208 and House Bill 8. There needs to be more conversation about the components added to these bills, not added with the hopes that they were passed in the final hour. I will let you all know if they respond. Thank you so much. That's the end of the report.
Student Board of Representatives.
Thank you. Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Samaria, and I will be giving part of the Student Board Report. And to kick us off, we had our roundtable meeting with, oh, yeah, sorry. We had our roundtable meeting with West Carrollton, Miami'sburg, Valley View, and I believe Northmont? Yeah, Northmont, in which we had the opportunity to speak with Naraj Antoni, and then, of course, Representative Young about our notions surrounding House Bill 445. Most of them were like our concerns that we had mentioned in our last report. But to remind you, those concerns were centered around transportation, missed time in school, student health, cost to school districts, and background checks on employees, as there's a lack of that, and there's not like a lot of clear language surrounding those issues. And we have also been, Nathan, I believe is his name, he let us know that there are school districts in violation of the current legislation surrounding this excuse time for religious teachings, as some school districts are lending or renting school buses to these third-party companies, which is illegal. And then, moving on to the next section, last Friday, we had our second quarter Montgomery County Student Advisory Delegate Meeting, and Mahir will start us off with that.
Hello, my name is Mahir. I'm a junior with the Board. So I'll be talking about the Montgomery County Student Advisory Delegate Meeting. And the first thing that we had was about social emotional learning, and the importance of having social intelligence as well as being, having grit or having a growth mindset, most importantly. And we got to see this through different age groups across our elementary schools, our middle schools, and high schools, and how we value and see that it's very important for students across all three of our levels to have this growth mindset. And if we look at the preschools, not the preschools, the elementary schools, we see that we just want them to keep on trying. And then the standards change from each level that there is, because we value that students, and we think it's important that students have this skill of a growth mindset. And to emulate this and to see the strategies we can come up with and to see when we want to quit, we were asked, the delegates were asked to go through a series of puzzles. And these puzzles were not the easiest to solve. So they caused some frustrations in some delegates. They caused us to think like we're quitting, and we're asked the reasons why we think we're quitting, why we kept on going, and how people around us can do the same. And another thing was teachers and adults should know that it takes time to develop a growth mindset. And growth mindset looks different in each and every student, and growth mindset isn't a linear process, unlike some people believe. Now, there is, now moving on to the next part, which is about U-Signs. U-Signs is recently implemented, or was implemented into the school district. And what it basically is, in two simple words, is a personality test. But unlike a lot of other personality tests, which just look at the interest of the student, this also includes aptitude. Now, aptitude is a person's innate ability to do something. It's whether or something that they themselves can do without their preferences involved. Now, what U-Signs does is it takes both these aspects, the preferences of the students, as well as the natural aptitude, combines them, and gives the student a series of things that they would be good at. Jobs, they give them a lot of things. One of the useful things that I noticed was they give you qualities in you that you can put on a resume. You can say, I'm good at this, I'm good at that. And it really helps the student out to figure out exactly what they should be doing, unlike a lot of the previous tests that we had, which just look at the preferences of a student. But U-Signs, an example that someone working at the Education Service Center gave was, this completely changes the pathway of what a student is wanting to take. So you may think that you're good at one specific thing, but after taking this test, you are going in another direction. Another thing that the delegation recommended in regards to U-Signs was that it should be gone through with an adult or some member for every single child, because it's not something that you just check the box with, it's something that's meant to help you. It's something that actually and truly helps kids, and they've seen it happen. So they recommend that someone, an adult, either your parent, counselor, teacher, or somebody, go through the results with you and help you find more about it. And after that, we got to meet the former Governor Bob Taft and...
Okay, yeah. I will tell you about our discussion with former Governor Bob Taft, as I'm sure most of you guys are familiar with, but if not, some background on him. He was a teacher in Tanzania as a member of the Peace Corps. He was a representative in the Ohio House of Representatives for five years, a county commissioner for 10 years, secretary of state for eight years, and then Governor of Ohio for eight years after that, and is now a professor at the University of Dayton. Just as a side note, we, the delegation members, will be traveling to the State House on February 25th to speak with General Assembly members about like one to three topics we feel passionate about. And most of our discussion was centered around how can we like talk effectively with General Assembly members and get our opinions, like our message across. One of the main topics of conversation was about the Ohio Constitution, which a lot of us were unfamiliar with, specifically Article Six, Section Two, which talks about like how schools are funded, and what are the two most important words from that section, which are thorough and efficient. So in order, like for our schools to be funded, it needs to be thorough and efficient for everyone to understand. And then who gets to decide what that means? Of course, the Ohio Supreme Court, as they are the ones who decide like what's constitutional and what's not. We talked about some like the influencers on law, which of course is our current Governor Mike DeWine, the Ohio General Assembly, which is our Senate and then our House of Representatives, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, local school leaders like you guys, teachers' unions, voters, school vendors, lobbyists, et cetera. For example, one of the, we have, we actually have a state insect due to second and third graders in Toledo reaching out to their, I believe, their House Representative, and that was like something they were concerned about, so they brought it up to the General Assembly, and it was voted on, and so our state insect is a ladybug. Another topic of conversation was the state budget. I didn't know this, but the state governor proposes a biannual bill for the Ohio General Assembly, which is met for the next two years. And I believe right now, Mike DeWine is in the process of making the budget for fiscal year 26, 27. You can correct me if I'm wrong. And that the Ohio state budget for fiscal year 2024 was about $95 billion, and about $41.4 billion of that went towards the General Revenue Fund, which is where most of the education funding comes from. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, when I was looking all this up, I got very lost in the sauce, and I realized that the state budget bill is 6,000 pages. So, amazing. But essentially, we're talking about who does K-12 compete with in regards to this funding, and we came up with higher education, corrections in prisons, mental health, medical care for low socioeconomic families, state park, agriculture and agribusiness, public health, et cetera. And we learned that K-12 receives about 40% of that funding, again, correct me if I'm wrong, and about an estimated $12.9 billion of that from fiscal year 2024 was given to K-12, and about $10 billion was given was to traditional school districts, so that money is where, like the money that we get comes from. About 1.4 goes to charter, and then $970 million goes to ed choice or private schools. We actually talked about how there are current lawsuits from about 130 districts in Ohio suing the state over the increase of funding for ed choice and just the ed choice voucher program being in place. A lot of schools feel like the ed choice voucher program is unconstitutional, and it absorbs Ohio's public tax dollars to subsidize private school tuitions, and is depleting the foundation funding or money for public schooling. And then lastly, we just talked about how do we get in touch with our representatives, and we learned the best communication is face-to-face, and that's not available all the time. And it actually turns out that emailing them isn't the best, and sometimes a letter works a little bit better. And when we are talking to them, we should focus on addressing one topic at a time, be respectful, courteous, and appreciative of their time.
After former Governor Bob Taft left, we got to talk about engaging Gen Z students specifically and the importance of it. So we got to see how Gen Z students are the most difficult generation to engage in classrooms. And the reason for that could be many. One of them is the new technology that's developing, and every generation in itself works very differently. Another cool statistic was that new information back then was not increasing at the rate that it is right now. In fact, at this rate, new, the information being released is doubling every six weeks. So things are getting a little bit more advanced, and the attendance spans of students are also being lessened. And we talked about a lot of this, and then eventually, we were asked to take a survey, or this place where we took, we came together and discussed some of these ideas and survey answers that we had. And some of these questions include, how has a teacher made class engaging? What subject was this about? And what can a teacher do to make a class engaging? And we had many answers, and one of them was that teachers, the importance of making classrooms engaging because it spikes interest in the students, leading to more and successful future. And to look more into this, we split up into groups, and we read an article. We split up into groups and came back with another group, and one of us would explain this to everyone else. So, the article's right in front of you. It's a Gallup article, K-12 School Struggle to Engage Gen Z Students. Now, specifically for this article, first it looked at how low the engagements are. This article looks at engagement through the criteria on, if you go to the second page, it has seven lists of criteria, the colored one. And they say that about 25 to 54% of students report not experiencing engaging classroom activities. And fewer than half of them say their school work challenges them or aligns with their strengths. Nearly half strongly agree they experienced none of the eight key engagement factors they have listed here. So engagement is a problem in schooling right now. And it also has an impact on the well-being of students. Specifically, if you go to the next page, the article mentions that highly engaged students are twice as likely to feel like they're thriving, 76 to 32%, and they're four times as likely to believe they have a great future ahead of them, 61 to 15%. So it's extremely important for us to have students engaged in the classroom so that they're able to succeed and have a better future in and of itself. And another thing that this article mentioned is it's important to look at non-college-bound students as well, because they feel less engaged in classroom, and it's important for the students across the board, including these students who don't wish to go to college, is to see the importance of what they're doing in the classroom to what's going to happen, or relating it to the real life, like focusing on more of what the idea of the assignment is rather than the assignment itself. And now, as a solution to this, it includes teachers having, engaging and using exciting material, being exciting themselves, to help students be more engaged, as well as hands-on learning with the students to keep them more engaged so that they're more excited about learning and they're more interested in what they're learning. Real word connections is also a method that teachers should use to keep students engaged, which eventually leads them to a much better future. Lastly, students feel a great sense of optimism in the future. They feel like they have a great future, but lower amount of them feel like they're ready to tackle this future. So we have this gap of people who are optimistic but people who don't feel ready. And it's important to fill that gap through engagement, through having teachers use these skills, and to be more engaged with students. And that was that. Thank you.
Stay there.
Okay, got it.
I've got a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
First of all, it's a great report. I'm glad you got the experience to do this and realize some of the dysfunction that goes on up there and lack of understanding. But in terms of the U-Signs test, when are they giving that test?
So they gave this test in advisory to us.
I mean, it's in, what grade?
Oh.
Just seniors or juniors and seniors?
It's across the board.
Yeah.
So it's, we just started this year, so it's freshman through high school, but we learned at some school districts, at Good Valley View, and I believe they brought with, they do it in middle school as well. So they start in middle school, and the issue that we saw is that we don't have like an adult that sits down and talks with us, like, what do your results mean? How can you use your results to your advantage?
And like in a lot of other school districts, they have like a timeline. So they make someone take it to middle school, then freshman year, then senior year, to update their results. But here at Centerville, we just all took it.
I believe this is just year one of implementation, though.
This is year one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've done in the past a different variation on this.
There's been something within Naviance, maybe?
Yeah, this is kind of new technology, and it's pretty impressive.
Right, yeah.
I can talk about that.
Can I piggyback? Are you going to stay on U-Signs, or?
No, no, you can piggyback.
Okay. So you guys have all taken it in your advisory. What was your, what was your impression of it? What did you think of the results? Did you think it was accurate? Did you, were you surprised by them? Like, your firsthand experience with it?
Your first?
Sure. So I actually took it a year before because I was a part of the delegation last year. So I'm a part of being a part of the delegation, I had to take it beforehand. And I actually experienced some results. I thought they were very intuitive and honestly very accurate. Now, obviously, some parts aren't as accurate, but I do believe it's a very good aptitude test and honestly, I guess, personality test to really try to discover who you are, because this time in like high school and in middle school, honestly, is the time to do that before you go off to college and go to the real world. And I feel like it would help, as you see in the Gallup article, a lot of us feel optimistic about the future, but we don't feel prepared for the future. So this could be one of the mini tools that we use to help get us students prepared for the future, whether it's college-bound, trade school, or just trade school workforce.
Okay. And what were your thoughts?
Yeah, I thought the article, the results were pretty accurate.
Yeah.
They were pretty helpful, too, because a lot of the other personality or like the test in general, they only take into account what you prefer, so they don't tell you what you're actually good at.
Okay.
But another example that was at the delegation was that some of the people working there, they had switched around a ton, like a lot, different places, and then eventually they ended up in education.
Okay.
And when they themselves took this test, it told them that you're great for education. So it was just like, I should have taken this years ago. But, yeah.
And you took it as well?
Yeah, I took it as well.
In advisory? And what did you think?
Mine was pretty accurate, so I used the words that you used, and I thought it was really aligned to how I know.
Great. Okay.
Yes. Unfortunately, Bob Taft did not go into like why we are not following the Constitution of funding. That's, I feel like that's one of the biggest issues that a lot of us at the delegation have, and that might be one of the topics we bring up when we go to the State House. I don't know, when I personally tried to do research, and specifically, I was like, oh, maybe I'll just go read the state budget myself. And then I realized the title page was 22 pages long, and that the actual document was almost 7,000 pages long. And then I, like, I guess I realized like how non-intuitive a lot of this is, and how important it is to understand something like the Ohio Constitution. But no, we did not go into like why we are not following the Constitution. Well, I guess, not really, honestly, but like really, just to find something that we're really passionate about and like focused on, that we want to see get changed now. Yes, that as well, because the way we were told was like when we go up there, there will be like several people coming in and out, and we might have to do like an elevator pitch essentially, so be on our toes. Yes, yes. I did not know that. Yeah. Yeah. So that was a part of some of the research that I did, as, yeah, yeah, looking into schools that were part of the lawsuit against the state of Ohio about school funding right now.
Seriously, guys, great, great job tonight.
Any other questions? All right. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is curriculum update, our K-15 ELA curriculum.
So I'm here today to update you about our process that has been ongoing since about spring of last year. And so any time we talk about literacy and ELA in elementary, I have to mention some of the requirements that we have to function under in the state of Ohio. And so that, you know, we're looking at our standards. We have the third-grade reading guarantee that's been in place, that I'll be coming back to talk to you in January about, our update. We also have had the dyslexia law on the books now for a few years. And then in the budget bill that she was just talking about from two years ago, that's where the requirement for high-quality instructional materials, it was on, I have it up there, it was on page 1,026 of the 6,198-page document. And so, that's kind of funny that she was mentioning that. But, so the high-quality instructional materials actually was in that budget bill two years ago, right? And what it says is that this, by the end of this year, we have to have chosen a core curriculum that is on the approved list that Ohio has put out, and that is what we've been in the process of doing this year. This is something, we were not planning to do a full curriculum adoption at this time, but because we knew this was coming, we budgeted for it, we did get an allocation from the state to help support that. And it has been over 20 years since we did a full adoption. And so just to kind of, we talked about that a little bit last month as well. And so just to walk you through our timeline from the adoption process, we started back in last spring and worked through visioning, talking about what we liked about our current curriculum, what our gaps might have been, as we were looking forward to what might be a new curriculum that we would be implementing. During that time, we also perused ed reports, we looked at all, into all of the programs that were on the approved list. Those started coming out in March, and then there was an update in April, then an update in May. And so we didn't have those lists until that time to do some of this work. We had vendor days, we went to see samples to investigate all of those different curriculums that might be possibilities. Several of the people in the curriculum office also attended ambassador training through ODU about instructional materials. Adam and I always work to make sure that we have the best instructional materials in Centerville. The process we followed this time is very similar to one we did for math a few years ago. It's just required at this point in time. And so from that required list, part of our job during this whole process is to find the program that fits best with our students and our systems in Centerville. And so when we moved into the summer, we narrowed down that list of programs that were available to six that we viewed on a vendor day. And so we had about over 60 staff who agreed, volunteered to be part of our pilot team, and they all came in in the summer, spent a whole day hearing about these different curriculums. And we listened to presentations about six curriculums, and by the end of that day, had narrowed it down to two. And so we have been piloting this semester two curriculums, and that was Wonders and Benchmark Advance. Both curriculums were very similar. They were core, core comprehensive curriculum, so they have all of the pieces in them that are required, and they address all the components, they're evidence-based, they're green in ed reports, they check all of the boxes that we wanted. And so what we did, our teachers have been doing this whole semester, is really, in a pilot, they try it out. They try out all the parts. They're doing, that's the curriculum that they're using, not our current one. We had 52 teachers piloting, and that's about 40% of our teachers at K-5 who teach reading. And so they spent this whole fall doing that. We had trainings along the way, some from the company, some that we did ourselves, to make sure that we were learning and experimenting and understanding all of the layers of the curriculum. And really, it's just, they get to try it out so that we can figure out what makes sense. It's not that they're just doing a lesson here, a lesson there. There are three or four units into these curriculums. That way, we can have a really good taste of how it works and what might be some of the bugs. And so when we got to December, the first week of December, we brought together the pilot teams and had them complete a rubric. And this is kind of where I left off last month. And so in that rubric, we looked at seven areas. We looked at the text, the foundational skills, the knowledge-building pieces, the student materials, the writing instruction, access materials, the writing instruction, access for all students and teacher tools. And the teachers all completed this independently. And so, I have some of the results here. And obviously, we averaged them by grade and by, then by all, just to kind of see and compare those programs. What we found through this comparison is both of these programs were very similar, but there were some key pieces that teachers liked better about Benchmark as we did some of this analysis. And so, this one is another one, student materials, and you can just kind of see how our teachers rated the different components of those after using it for this first half of the year. When we do the overall comparison, it does show that Benchmark was edging out Wonders in that, then we spent the rest of the day having them kind of teach each other about the program that they learned about. And so, the teachers who had been doing Benchmark were talking to the teachers that were doing Wonders to try and pro and con. And we said, we had, we have enough charts kind of wallpapered this room in terms of our processing and thinking through which curriculum would be the best, which, what did you like about this? What were some of the downfalls? And kind of putting together that piece. When we got to the end of the day, so they had already rated them independently, then they'd worked together to kind of process back and forth, like what, which program do you like? What did, how did this one deal with this content or that? Then we asked, for the next six years, what would be the program you would choose to use in Centerville? And so, it was two-thirds to a-third Benchmark. And so, we intend to move forward with Benchmark Advance. It will be a six-year contract. And so, what you'll see on the agenda later on is a motion, resolution, thank you, to approve entering into that agreement. It is a six-year agreement that includes all of the online materials and all of the consumable materials for that period of time for all the students. And so, it is a big purchase. And so, teachers just really felt like the materials were a bit more engaging, there was more choice or student ownership in the Benchmark materials than there was in Wonders. And they just kind of liked how it was presented, felt like kids were engaged. A couple of the teachers did some polls of students, and they leaned in that direction as well in their buildings. And so, Benchmark is one that is arranged around 10 units across the year. Those units go about three weeks. It has a consumable that goes home at the end of those units. That's kind of like a magazine, but it's like newsprint. And so, it's kind of modern-looking, and the kids were really engaged. It's something that they can annotate and write right on, something the kids really liked. The other graphic on there talks about the assessments. There are oodles of assessments in this program that can help us analyze where kids are, if they're growing, what gaps or holes that they might have. And so, the next steps is that resolution on the agenda tonight. We are also collecting information from all of our teachers that piloted, and many of them are going to move into a continuance of the Benchmark pilot for the rest of the year. And so, they're going to allow us to continue piloting and not enter into our contracted until June. And so, that's really great of them and add some value to where we are. And then, we will begin an implementation plan. So, this is a brand-new curriculum. We have to think through, how does it fit in our departmentalized teams? How does it work in kindergarten in our district with half-day? There's some layers that we have to work through to make it work in Centerville. And then, we'll be coming back in the next couple of months about ELA curriculums for intervention. And so, that's a smaller piece of a process that's required, but that's kind of where we are. What questions do you have for me?
Are the Wonders group gonna switch over to Benchmark for the rest of the year?
They're either gonna switch over to Benchmark or go back to what we were doing. Most of them are choosing to switch over, which just gives us more teachers that are, it tells us a lot of information to help our implementation next year.
Why wouldn't we urge everyone to switch over, knowing that we're gonna be switching over?
We are. It's a very small, it's a very small number of people that are sticking, going back.
What was the feedback on the teachers in the classrooms that piloted the Benchmark program as far as transition from our old system to this? Did they see any hiccups or any pitfalls to be aware of there?
They have provided us with lots of feedback that are gonna help with that. Transitioning to a program from what we've been doing is a, it's a culture shift and a big change. And so, they've lived it and come out the other side with lots of positives. And so, we talked about how, what are some things they learned in that that can help us with the other 60% of the staff that haven't had this experience?
Okay. That's always my concern when we switch curriculums, usually it's with math. Or it has been my experience in my household with a change in math curriculum, and it's that transition period. So, good, I'm glad we have that. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Quality Profile. Mrs. Swan.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sarah Swan, the district's community relations specialist. So, I'll kind of end our board reports on a very positive note. Each year, we publish a quality profile to reflect on the previous school year and to celebrate student and staff achievements in the classroom, on the field, and within the community. These achievements, we've tied to the five focus areas from our strategic plan. So, tonight, I'm just going to share just a few of these 2023-24 accomplishments with the community. We always include some highlights in the winter issue of our Accent newsletter that is mailed out to residents. And the full profile is available on our website under the About Us tab, as well as copies of the previous year's quality profiles. So, last year, we welcomed 8,382 preschool through high school students and just under 1,100 staff members into our 13 school buildings. Our staff continues to support each learner's journey, and we were so proud to receive an overall rating of five stars on the 2324 Ohio School Report Card, the highest mark a school district can receive. We also exceeded expectations for all five report card components. Centerville High School continues to prepare students for success and was once again ranked in the top 10% of US public high schools by US News and World Report. CHS is well above the state average for our four-year high school graduation rate and in the top 8% for alumni who go on to graduate from college within six years. Another point of pride is the expansion and accessibility of our AP courses. Over the past five years, CHS has seen a 28% increase in the number of students enrolled in AP courses and a 32% increase in the number of exams given. Last year, our Career Tech Compact with Kettering and Oakwood offered 19 distinct career education programs, which, as you all know, is a state requirement to offer those types of programs. To help meet workforce needs in high-demand career fields, CHS also offers two career credentialing programs, that's manufacturing and state-tested nurse aides. And of course, all the credit doesn't go to the high school. Students are excelling at all levels with more than half of state tests resulting in accomplished, advanced, or advanced-plus scores. And those categories all exceed the proficient rates set by the state. All of our state-identified subgroups once again exceeded performance goals for state tests in ELA and math. And our professional staff is highly qualified. We have three-quarters of our teachers who have at least a master's degree, and our teachers have an average of 16 years of experience. In the 2024 Niche.com rankings, which just came out recently, Centerville Schools was named the number-one school district in the Dayton area. One reason for that, in addition to excellent academic opportunities, of course, are athletic, performing arts, and extracurricular programs, which offer students a well-rounded education and teach them valuable life skills. We had nearly 2,300 participants on our middle and high school athletic teams, more than 1,000 students in our performing arts groups in grade six through eight, and over 200 students from all grade levels involved on 31 Destination Imagination teams. We received the Best Communities for Music Education designation from the NAM Foundation for outstanding commitment to music education for the fifth straight year. And CHS brought home the League All Sports Trophy for the 47th time out of 48 years. We're proud to offer comprehensive supports, services, and programming to help every learner grow every day. Centerville is the second-largest school district in Montgomery County and the 21st-largest in the state. 29% of our students are part of a minority ethnic group, 13% are identified as having special needs, and 24% are economically disadvantaged. We have 400 students who are English learners, which is 167% increase since 2015, and their families speak more than 40 languages. We held college and career events, FAFSA workshops, mentored education majors from underrepresented populations, and created a supply closet full of donations for new teachers, all part of our efforts to offer diverse activities that include all students, staff, and families. We continued streamlining communication through the Parents Care Platform, with the vast majority of parents and staff members activating their accounts. We also shared information through the district website and social media platforms, email newsletters, our hard copy Accent newsletter, and of course, through traditional media outlets. And as you saw with the community forums and the Elks Connect activities and events, intentional and sometimes even non-traditional outreach opportunities have been important for us over the past year. And those took place both in our school buildings and out in the community. Of course, we cannot offer all of these experiences without the right resources, from appropriate school funding to professional development programs undertaken by our staff, to volunteer efforts and grant opportunities from our community, and so much more. These resources have allowed us to support student health and wellness needs, provide material help to a number of families in need, offer enrichment opportunities in our classrooms, and mentor students as they explore careers. We can take care of our facilities, all but one of which are more than 50 years old, transport more than 6,500 public and private students to school every day, and implement safety measures like upgraded lighting and exterior door security. 71% of each dollar was spent in the classroom compared to the state average of 67%. And when comparing the percentage of property taxes that support local schools, Centerville ranks the fourth lowest out of all 16 Montgomery County school districts. Again, these are just a few of the many, many accomplishments outlined in our Quality Profile, which actually only touches on some of the important learning happening in our classrooms every day. So, I just want to end with a sincere thank you to our entire staff, our students and parents, our community, and of course, our Board of Education for supporting quality education in Centerville, Washington Township. Thank you.
Is the Quality Profile in hard copy?
It is not. So, what we do is we take a page in Accent, in the winter issue of Accent, and put some highlights with a link and a QR code so people can see it digitally. And then the full, it's like 20 pages, so.
Is it possible to make hard copies of these slides?
We could look into that. It would, it would be a cost. So, we've always just had it included.
I think it would be nice to send a hard copy to all the city council.
Oh, sure, yes, yes. We did talk about that.
Because we talked about communicating well with them and getting them involved and keeping them involved. And also, to have a bunch of hard copies maybe at each library so parents could actually physically take it and see it.
Okay.
We just know a lot of people don't go online and look at this stuff.
Sure.
So, if we can do that, it might be worth the cost.
Yeah, we'll look into how much that would be. But we did talk about at least trying to print something for the next joint entity meetings for that reason too, so.
But this slide presentation is something that we can share via, like an email link to?
It is. It is actually in the, it's in the email newsletter this week. It's already up online. And then, like I said, it will be, we kind of have used the Accent. We used to mail like even a postcard, but even that, with postage costs and printing costs just go up every time, so.
But yeah, we made a bunch of copies at each library. They could always keep it there for someone to take and look at.
Sure.
Anything to give more communication out there?
Yep, we'll look into that.
Thanks.
Sure, no problem.
All right. Moving on to Treasurer's Recommendations. We have a motion to consider approving the November 2024 financial statements, including monthly general fund rolling report, monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, then and now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the Treasurer and supported by Board Resolution totaling $77,176.65.
They move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes. Consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings, November 25, 2024 regular meeting. We have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes. Superintendent Recommendations. Superintendent recommends accepting resignation as listed on Schedule A. Superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra-duty assignments. And the superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reason and on the dates given. May I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
I'm sorry. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes. The superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D2 for supplemental contracts or extra-duty assignments.
They move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Stay.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes. Consider a resolution to adopt K-5 ELA curriculum to be provided by Benchmark Education Company for a price not to exceed $882,925.50, as previously discussed. May I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Are there any questions or discussion?
How much are we getting from the state for this? You know, it said there was some supplement.
$349,176.
Okay.
And we received that in last fiscal year. So, that was revenue that we received as restricted revenue last April, I think, was when that came. And so, that became kind of a part of our ending cash balance that we're spending, we budgeted for this year.
Yes. And is this cost, like you said, we haven't adopted a full ELA curriculum, K-5. Is this more than we usually budget, even with the, or after accounting for the state funding? Is this in line?
We have talked about this budgeting a million dollars for that. We were thinking it was gonna be someone.
Okay.
The other quote I got was $851,000 for the other curriculum, but it did not include any professional development, which wasn't included in the decision.
Okay.
And so, I think it's very common.
Great. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes. Consider a resolution to ratify and approve the STRS pickup for the Assistant Superintendent position. Whereas the Centerville City School District Board of Education, or the Board, has traditionally recognized the service of its key administrators by providing them STRS and/or SERS pickup on the pickup as part of their compensation package with the Board. And whereas the salary and benefits of the position of Assistant Superintendent is subject to salary schedules and other documents that have not specified the amount of pickup applicable to the employee holding that key position. And whereas the Board wishes to approve and ratify its pickup and payment of the Assistant Superintendent's full STRS contribution, treated as pickup on the pickup for the period of August 1, 2016 through July 31, 2025. Now therefore, the Board hereby resolves, ratifies, and approves its pickup and payment of the full STRS contribution obligations of those employees serving in the position of Assistant Superintendent during the period of August 1, 2016 through July 31, 2025, and the treatment of those payments as pickup on the pickup, with the picked-up amount included in the Assistant Superintendent's compensation for the purpose of calculating retirement benefits. Be it further resolved that this pickup shall be a condition of the Assistant Superintendent's Be it further resolved that this pickup shall be a condition of the Assistant Superintendent's employment and shall not be at the Assistant Superintendent's option.
Same move.
Second.
Is there any discussion or question?
So just to clarify, this, this is something that we've, we've done with every Assistant